Hafadeh and Manana Sijus, good morning. The Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation will be called to orders about 8:07 this morning. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is the appointment of Mr. Milton Morinaga, member to the Guam Visitors Bureau's Board of Directors. The second item on the agenda is Bill Number 398-33COR, an Act to Appropriate Funds from the fiscal year 2016 fund balance of the Tourism Attraction Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for the Hurra Academy Chamorro Language Immersion Preschool Program, and also Bill Number 399-33, an Act to Appropriate Funds from fiscal year 2016 fund balance Tourism Attraction Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for eFamalian for the printing, purchasing and distribution of Chamorro literature for the children. I will note for the record that there will be an amendment to the title on Bill 399-33COR to correct the name of the program which the funding source will go into. At this time, I note for the record that in accordance to 5GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8107, notices were sent via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets, and notices were sent via email to all senators and all media outlets on December 6, which adheres to the five-day notice, and the second notice was on December 9, which adheres to the 48-hour notice. If there are any written testimonies that want to be submitted to the listening audience, you have, you can do so by sending it to the office of Senator Tina Munia Barnes at 155 Hester Place, Hagatni Guam, 96910, or do it the old-fashioned way by submitting a fax 2472-3400, or email at senator@tina munia barnes.com. If there are any other inquiries or questions that the listening audience may have, they could call our office at 472-3455 or 56, and they can speak to the committee staff in our office. So, at this time, the first up on the agenda is the appointment of Mr. Milton Morinaga, member to the Guam Visitors Bureau's Board of Directors. We do have a sign-in sheet. If those that are sitting here would like to, in the audience, would like to testify on his behalf, you're more than welcome to do so, or you could just write your name if you're in support or not in support of Mr. Morinaga's appointment. Okay? And we'd like to wish everybody who's listening, as we are in the holiday spirit and the blessings of Christmas, we'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Before Mr. Morinaga gets to speak, I'm going to ask that those who came to testify for him speak first, and then you can present your testimony. And also, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank my good colleague who's here with me, Senator Tom Ada. Manana Sijus, thank you for coming. Okay. I will go ahead and start with Mr. Oscar Miashta. I would like to ask all of you gentlemen to please state your name for the record, where you're from, and if you support the appointment or not. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Tom Ada, good morning. I do have a written testimony. My name is Oscar Miashta. I do have a written testimony, so if I may to ensure that I cover everything that I would like to say, if I may just go ahead and read that. Good morning, Madam Chair, Tina Munia Barnes, and Senator Ada. My name is Oscar Miashta. I'm here this morning to extend my whole hearted support for the appointment of Mr. Milton Morinaga to the Board of GBB. I've had the privilege of working closely with Mr. Morinaga while I was on the Board of GBB from 2012 to 2015. During my tenure at the GBB, I was a treasurer and head of the Korea Market Committee. Milton has been the co-chair of the Japan Market Committee at GBB. He has demonstrated his leadership skills during the same period by often voicing his opinions during the broad board meetings, not afraid to challenge or ask poignant questions to the Board, executive committee members, other members of the Board, and management of GBB on various important aspects of GBB. And he has always advocated for the need for GBB to work closely in a collaborative fashion with other government Guam agencies such as GIA and GIDA. Also, he's a type of individual who is able to maintain objectivity, impartiality, while making critical decisions, and always place Guam's tourism as the number-one priority in supporting the agenda of GBB rather than focusing on his employer's interest. I'm particularly impressed by his crisis management ability, which he had demonstrated following the tragedy that occurred a few years ago involving a knife-wielding lunatic who killed and injured many innocent Japanese tourists in Tumon. I clearly remember his leadership in managing the reputational damages to Guam during the tragic episode by working closely and timely with the family members of the victims, the affected tour agents, and dealing effectively with the Japanese media. I also recall him leading the Guam delegation in attending the funeral service of the two individuals who were killed by the lunatic perpetrator, although such events were painful and stressful for him and other attendees. I also recall Chairwoman Tina Munia Barnes, I think she, you also graciously attended those funerals. This type of altruistic and proactive steps taken by him clearly demonstrate his dedication, commitment, and exemplary ability to lead Guam's number-one industry. And I'm aware of his initiative to increase the airline seats coming out of Japan to Guam in an effort to boost the number of Japanese tourists, particularly from Haneda Airport. Although securing an airline to fly from Haneda to Guam is a huge challenge due to limited international flight spots, slots available from Haneda, I strongly believe that he will be successful in adding more airline seats from Japan to Guam in due course. And I'm confident that he will continue to help increase the market share of other important destinations such as Korea, China, Taiwan, and Hong Kong in an effort to market Guam and maintain the reputation of Guam as a family-oriented, clean destination close to various Asian countries while promoting the local goods and services which will benefit the people of Guam. Further, he is able to work effectively with the management of GBB as well as various key stakeholders of GBB, including tour agents, other government agencies, mayor's council, and all fine and tourism-related firms and organizations. Accordingly, I hereby offer my full and unequivocal support for the appointment of Mr. Milton Morinaga to the GBB Board. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to express my viewpoints. Sijus Massey.
Sina Massey, Mr. Morinaga, for your testimony. Next on the agenda, I will have Mr. Joe Blas.
The Honorable Chairperson, Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Ada, Manana Sijus, Buenas and Saludo. I am Joe Blas, the Chairman of the Board for the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. I have known Mr. Morinaga for over 10 years and personally for seven years. I'm here in support of Mr. Morinaga's confirmation to the appointed member of the Guam Visitors Bureau. The many years that I have known Mr. Morinaga, I know him to be a frontrunner in the tourism community. His vision in destination management, hospitality service standard, economic climate, the conservation of our island culture, and natural resources proves that he is capable to move Guam forward in the blueprint for tourism. Mr. Morinaga will definitely influence public and private partnership in market research, market regulations, market planning, and a whole plate full of economic development that matters to us here in Guam. He is a strategic driver in terms of education and training, safety, and security. He has a keen eyes that can balance the needs of our visitors and the needs of our people of Guam. His appointment to the Guam Visitors Bureau will be an asset and will greatly benefit Guam's visitor industry and people of Guam. Even though he's from Hawaii and talks the kind, he is more Guamanian than most. He is never po asshole when it comes to loving our island, and besides that, he rides a hardy devil's. Sina Massey.
Hago mas, Mr. Blas, ren propetso. Mr. Peter Skro.
Good morning, Senator Barnes and Senator Ada. My name is Peter Skro. I'm from the village of Tumoning, and I'm here in support of the appointment of Milton. I want to say that I'm here actually wearing two hats. I'm here personally, but I'm also here as chairman of the Governor's Council of Economic Advisors. A lot of people don't know who the Council of Economic Advisors are. It was created by the governor about, oh, it's been about six years now by executive order. It's basically individuals in the community that are recognized to know things about Guam's economy. And we, I wanted to say that we kind of shaped the form of it about six months ago, and I have to say that one of the things that drove me to do it as chairman is my vice-chairman, Milton, so we've had a chance to serve together. One of the things with the council is that we don't interfere with things that happen with GIDA, but they're definitely made of people that have direct contacts with investors or with a variety of people that are not just within the tourism industry but outside the tourism industry. Many people may not have read, but Japan Airlines, for instance, does have training programs that are occurring here on Guam. I know that, just because he'd be too proud to say it, but that we owe it to Milton that that's happening. Those were the types of results that we wanted to achieve, and in that case, it didn't take a whole committee to get quite a bit, quite a bit done for that. With respect to tourism, I think that you only have to read Milton's resume. It's amazing what he's done, not just in Guam but Honolulu and the CNMI. And when looking at the Guam Visitors Bureau, which I served some time ago, I couldn't think of someone that has such a good resume to be qualified to serve on the Guam Visitors Bureau Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skro. I want to go ahead and before I have Mr. Morinaga speak, I acknowledge the presence of Mr. Nate Denight, the CEO and President of Guam Visitors Bureau. Would you like to say something, Mr. Denight? And I also have Ms. Mary Rhodes, who... Before we give the mic to Mr. Denight, I do know that there are several people also signed in just to support, Alvin Chang, Mr. Kuroshi, and Mr. Madera. Thank you, Mr. Denight.
Hafadeh, I'm Nate Denight, President and CEO of the Guam Visitors Bureau, and I'd like to read my testimony in favor of Mr. Morinaga. Hafadeh, Chairwoman Barnes, Senator Ada, and all the members of the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Guam Preservation Trust. Sijus Massey, allowing me to submit testimony in support of the appointment of Milton Morinaga to the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. Morinaga-san has dedicated his life to the responsible development of tourism throughout the Pacific, especially here on Guam. He was instrumental in moving the construction of the Tsubaki Tower, which will add 340 hotel rooms to the industry's inventory and create an additional 300 jobs for our local people. Throughout his leadership, Ken Corporation has invested millions into this community that goes to giving our families of Guam a better way of life. Morinaga-san has been part of the GBB Board as a membership-elected director for the last several years. As chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee, he has played a pivotal role in GBB's efforts to stem the decline from the top-source market by implementing a new strategy that focuses on diversifying the market profile. Morinaga-san continues to be an asset to GBB, and we humbly ask for your support in confirming him as part of the Board. Sijus Massey, and thank you again for this opportunity to support Morinaga-san's appointment. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Denight, Mrs. Rhodes.
Buenas, then, Hafadeh. Good morning, Chairwoman, Honorable Chairwoman Tina Munia Barnes, and Senator Ada. Thank you for having us here today. As the president of the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, I have right to express my full support of Mr. Milton Morinaga's nomination to serve on the Board of Directors for the Guam Visitors Bureau. Mr. Morinaga has already served three years on the GBB Board of Directors and currently sits as the chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee. Overall, Mr. Morinaga has more than 40 years of experience in the tourism industry managing hotel resorts and developing new properties in key destinations such as Hawaii, Saipan, and Guam. While in Hawaii, Mr. Morinaga held several leadership roles in general management, business development, operations, and government-community relations. The success in Hawaii led Mr. Morinaga to new markets such as Saipan and Guam. Of the 40-plus years, seven years alone were spent in Saipan with a Hyatt Regency Hotel and a total of 12 years together with a Hyatt Regency Guam and PHR Ken Micronesia on Guam. During his 12 years in Guam, I've had the distinct honor of working alongside with Mr. Morinaga on many industry initiatives, including key items for the Tourism 2020 Plan with GBB. For example, GATRE has worked closely with hoteliers and GBB to help improve quality and yield by providing training and improving service throughout the island for workforce development programs. Also, GATRE works closely with hoteliers and GBB on destination management issues such as upgrading facilities and improving Guam's image through important beautification and safety and security programs. Mr. Morinaga has distinguished himself from others over the years in different capacities in the industry, as not only a hotelier, as an owner's rep, but also as managing director of PHR Ken Micronesia. Through his varying roles, I have worked and continue to work closely with Mr. Morinaga on important issues that advocate just legislation and government regulations that affect the tourism industry. For these reasons, and he's a very good friend of mine, and I think that he's a great person for this island and has done well by GBB through his years, I strongly support Mr. Morinaga on his nomination and hopeful appointment to the Guam Visitors Bureau's Board of Directors. Since then, Mary.
Sijus Massey. At this time, I ask Mr. Morinaga to please present his testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. Hafadeh, good morning, Chairwoman Tina Munia Barnes, and Senator Tom Ada, and distinguished members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you today. It is privileged for me, and I'm honored to appear before you in this chamber among dedicated public servants. I want to thank you for your time this morning, and Governor Eddie Calvo for the trust he has placed in me by nominating me to serve on Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I am also thankful to be joined by my friends as well as business associates who showed their support for me by being here today. My career in tourism industry dates back in 1974, when I started my first job in acting general manager at the small hotel in Honolulu. From there, I started a 40-plus-year career in tourism and hotel business. In 1979, I moved to a managerial position with one of the large US hotels changed to Hyatt Regency Waikiki in Hawaii. Therefore, I spent seven years in Hyatt Regency Hotel in Saipan. In 1990, I moved to Big Island of Hawaii and was directly involved in development and execution plans of development of luxury hotel, including two golf courses. My managerial position also, there also involved negotiating with various government agencies to secure government approval for the development as well as developing community outreach program to obtain public support for the proposed development. After seeing the project to successful completion, I relocated to Guam in 2004 as an owner's representative of Hyatt Regency Guam until 2007, when the hotel was sold. I then took a managing director position with PHR Ken Micronesia, which I still currently hold. My direct involvement with the Guam Visitors Bureau began 2013 as an elected Board of Directors and presently under chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee. GBB has led the tourism industry to new heights, with arrivals continuing to break records. The fiscal year reached the past 1.5 million visitors, more than 100,000 more than fiscal year 15, which was also an all-record. Hotel occupancy taxes nearly doubled in the last five years. The tourism generated $245 million in taxes for Guam, government of Guam last year. More than 20,000 jobs are sustained by visitors, or one in every three jobs in island. That's why our motto in GBB is making Guam a better place to live, work, and visit. However, the tourism industry is quickly changing, and we are facing some challenges. 10 years ago, Japan used to be 80% of arrivals, but today represent only 50%. There are several reasons for decline, and as a chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee, I've worked with GBB management to update the way we do business in Japan. We have implemented a new cooperative marketing program, incentivized airlines to add more flights, we hired a new Japan marketer, and realigned our operations to support our stakeholders better. Lastly, this year, we are focusing on online and social media channels to drive business and promote all wonderful things we can do only on Guam. Our goal in addition to continue the growth in our other markets, including Korea and China and Hong Kong, is to stop the Japan market negative arrivals trend this year, and I feel by next year, we will once again see growth in our Japan market. I believe that my substantial experience in tourism industry and especially hotel industry provides me with skill set necessary to help lead the Guam Visitors Bureau. We have made substantial progress in promoting and developing tourism industry in Guam, but there's still work to be done, and I am committed and confident that I can carry on the mission of Guam Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Sijus Massey, and your support, and I, if confirmed, I look forward to working closely with you. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Sina Massey. Senator Tom Ada, remarks.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Morinaga. Of course, I've known you for a long time, and you still have black hair, like I did. First of all, I noticed that the, I guess, the chairmanship of GBB has been vacated. Is that correct?
Yes, that's why I'm probably...
Are you in line for that?
I wish I could be a chairman. I'll be, I wish I would like to be a chairman, of course.
Okay. The other, the other question that I have is, I know that GBB spends quite a bit of time and effort in basically going to the point of origin of the tourists to send them over our way, and then, of course, once they get here, they do whatever it is that tourists do. But do you, do you feel that enough funds in the Tourism Attraction Fund is being invested for destination management? I realize that there's funds that are given to the municipalities, you know, to clean, cut up the grass and all that, but within Tumon itself. And I ask that question based on the fact that maybe, what, 50% of the streetlights there don't work. You know, there's certainly a lot of, I think, safety issues down there, crosswalks and whatnot, sidewalks that are kind of falling apart. And so, maybe if you can just kind of comment on that, and do you, do you think that enough is being invested in Tumon?
Thank you very much. You're exactly correct. The TAF funds are not enough to maintain what we need to maintain Tumon. Okay, nothing is enough. Okay, the biggest problem is that we do make corrections or fix things, but the biggest issue is we don't maintain. We don't enforce what we fix. So, biggest issues like the road in Tumon, we fix it up, the Guam Public Works fixed the road nicely and everything, but the developer or the contractor next day dig a hole, put there an infrastructure, and fill it up, and that's it. And nobody's monitoring that to make sure it's done properly. So, within six to one year, you have another pothole. And who's enforcing that? We need to enforce these people, developer and contractor, to be responsible, that our tax money is spent to make it nice for the tourists to come. Tourism is the biggest asset for us, and when the business industry is success, then we have more employment. But the thing is, people come here to expect to see a nice ocean, nice beach, nice Tumon. But the biggest thing is, others, I'm not looking at the short-term fixes, I'm looking at long-term fixes. You know, we tend to look at short-term and ignore what consequence we're going to see at later date, like, for instance, the flooding. The initial study was to dump all the water into the ocean. Did anybody really study that that ocean is our resource? We cannot ignore that. Immediately, we might fix that storm drain issue, but we're not going to, we have to see the consequence of what will happen to the ocean. So, now we, GIDA, went back and trying to look at the issue again to make sure that we do not destroy our natural resources. And that's my biggest thing, is that we tend to do a short-term fixes and not a long-term, and we don't, even though it's a short-term, then we need to maintain and monitor those fixes. And good example is the streetlights. We fix it, next day it burns out, but we are working hard, GBB is working hard to make sure it's a permanent fixes. And that's why my goal is to do permanent fixes and not a quick fixes. And that will maintain for the tourists to come back and see that nothing has been destroyed after we do the short-term fixes.
Well, thank you very much for your response, and that certainly gives me a lot of encouragement that, you know, you will, I mean, your forward-looking perspective on things, and of course, I've, I've known you for a long time. I have full faith and confidence in, in your appointment, that you will serve well on GBB, so I'll tell you right now, I, you will have my support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Senator Ada, and Mr. Morinaga, I want to share with you that we've worked together at least for the last six, seven years, and I want to say that your professionalism and your expertise in the arena is, has been excellent and amazing. I want to say that our working collaboration together, based on the tragic incident that happened several years ago, with the quick thinking and the collaboration with our stakeholders and many of you that are in this room today, it was with at least the compassion and the vision that we worked closely with those families and with the Japanese community that literally saved Guam from, from a lot of negative publicity. And it took a lot of, I think, just being able to, in our language, we would say fatale the family and give respect to the family and extend the condolences from the island of Guam. And it was because of your complete interaction, working with our island community and stakeholders, but also working with the community back in Japan, that we were able to at least bring some peace and, and know that, that when things happen that are tragic, we have to come together as a family, and that really gave me a very... And, and that really gave me a very powerful impression of how you can work closely with, with others, especially with the community. I want to share to the public that the community involvement that you've engaged yourself with, not just with your Harley group, but working closely with Gef Pago, the Rigalo Foundation, the Habitat for Humanities, working with Department of Agriculture, the Food Farm to Table programs. I want to say that those are very admirable. And you continue to integrate closely with the village residents. And that's something that, that we need to continue to see, is we have to have board of directors that are willing to not just work on the marketing aspect, but to remember that when we market Guam, we have to make sure that in Guam, that we're ready ourselves. And as Guam Visitors Bureau has stepped up to the plate to help with the, with the beautification and the maintenance of our island and making sure that our product is safe, we've also got to remember about taking care of our own local programs and making sure that what we need to do to promote, perpetuate, advocate, and, and really, uh, share Guam to the rest of the world, that those things and that those programs need to be included. And as I see a lot of folks in the, in the audience today that are here to, to talk about the two other bills, I want to say that it's important that the collaboration be there. You know, sometimes we have to give resources in order to get back. But we should never forget about the identity and the advocacy and the promotion of who we are as island people. Our Chamoral people, our Chamoral history, our 4,000-year-old history, that needs to be preserved. Because if we don't do it, nobody else will. And I know that with your heart and soul in the tourist industry and working closely with the stakeholders here, with the Hotel and Restaurant Association, with the private, with the private sector, but more importantly, with, with just the village residents. I know that you had close working relationships with several of the mayors in the villages to make sure that we bring the programs out that we have. I want to say that this is going to be a good thing. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, I'm going to exponentially do the report because I think it's important that we feel that they can see that's been vacated for several months now. But, um, my one question to you would be, if there is anything that you could make a change today based on the programs that Guam Visitors Bureau has, or anything that you can do to enhance what GBB has, is there any ideas that you could put to the table?
Yes, one thing that I would like to see and emphasize is that I want to see a balanced residents' needs and the visiting industry, meaning exactly what you said. Without the locals, the residents, the village, we cannot sell Guam. They are the resource, they are the asset of Guam. And with their help, we can sell Guam. And so, one of the things I would like to see is more like a village competition where they will have their own resource to sell goods or to sell their village, something uniqueness or whatever, and let the popularity vote choose which village will be the best. And of course, the help of GIDA and GBB will fund their whatever development they have. So that makes their economic sustainability or research what they can sell. That means you're going to have more buy Guam product, like their vegetables, food, or whatever. So they need to be proud of their village, and I'm proud of working with a lot of the mayor councils like Mayor Hoffman, and, and see what we can do to enhance that type of enjoyment. And when the tourists come, I would like to see the tourists to go out of Tumon, go to south, outside of the box, and see the entire Guam. And to do that, of course, the GBB, GIDA, and all those government agency will hand, give help to them to make sure that they will be successful. And they think that way, they can take pride of themselves. And I think it's important that the residents will be, work with us too at the same time.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Moronaga. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, if nobody in the audience would like to testify on behalf, Mr. Polino, please, please have a seat.
I'm sorry. Hafiri, Agua Husei Bill Paulino. I'm currently the school principal for St. Francis School. And with that note, I, you know, I just couldn't help but come up here and testify. I know that for the last 26 years with St. Francis School, we have been having actually from 10 to 20 students from Japan. And currently, we're also arranging where students come out here from Korea. And so I know the last two years, we had something like in the neighborhood of more than 50 Korean students that we actually, you know, had at school that were there just to interact with our students. And so each year, one of the things that I know that the board of, you know, for GBB would always support our activities, we would meet with them, and they welcome the students from Japan, and they would also even provide some gifts. One of the things that I saw over the last 20-some years of this program with St. Francis School, and that is these families in which we made, you know, friends. They have become part of our family for St. Francis School. Even the adults, like for instance, just last year, we housed, or rather, we housed, you know, in my home, several Japanese who became just like brothers and sisters to us. And so what GBB is doing with this gentleman right here, and I have that confidence that he's going to go out, I'm from the South, sir, and I know that there are so many things out there in the southern area that, you know, we can put together, help each other, not just Gef Pago. In fact, I fathered, you know, the Gef Pago concept in Alahan, with Judy Flores. And one of the things that I know of is there are many things in which we can attract these tourists to come to the island. This gentleman stated that it is, you know, an asset. The tourist industry is something that we need to continue to work on. And so I really ask that you give your support to GBB and ensure that it's not just a bad fix that we see up there, you know, like what the gentleman stated, that it's fixed today and there's no enforcement. But then, in order for that enforcement, you know, to occur, it needs also some funding. So I, sir, I really support your idea, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Polino, Senator Masi. Okay, thank you. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we will call the appointment of Mr. Milton Moronaga to the Board of Directors for the Guam Visitors Bureau publicly heard. Thank you so very much for those who came in attendance to support Mr. Moronaga's confirmation. Sisus Masi, Senator Masi, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda is bill number... Alkamos, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, up on the agenda next is bill number 398-33COR, as introduced by myself, Senator Tina Rose Munier-Barnes, which is an act to appropriate funds from fiscal year 2016 on balance of the Tourist Attraction Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau for the Hurrao Academy's Chamoral Language Immersion Preschool Program. I do know that there are a lot of folks from the Hurrao Academy that are here to testify on this bill. And at this time, we do have some folks setting up. So we'll ask that the cameras just stay on while we get prepared. Ms. Amory, are you going to be doing a presentation? Presentation? Okay. So, yes, a video. Yes. Um, so if anybody else in the audience wants to sign in in support of or to give oral testimony, please do so because there are a lot of you here. Sign up. If you don't want to speak but just want to support the efforts, come in and check marks. Just put your name, and if you want to support it, say support. If you're in opposition, put opposition. If you don't have to speak, but we would like to at least get the names who were, who are here this morning so that we can append them to the committee report. Ladies and gentlemen, while the folks are signing in right now, I'd like to go ahead for the record, work with the legislative findings and intent to this bill and the reason why the committee felt that bill 398-33COR was important. And it does state, and it's, has been, the Committee on Tourism has been working closely with the Hurrao Academy. And it states that the number of Chamoral speakers here on our island of Guam continues to decline and is under immediate threat of extinction. The average number of proficient Chamoral speakers is at an average age of 55 years in order. Furthermore, the average life expectancy of Guam's Chamoral people is at the age of 65 and 70 years. It is conceivable that the language will be extinct in the year 2025. The legislature felt, and our committee felt, that in the, that in the efforts of preserving and protecting who we are as island people and Chamoros, that the efforts must be made to preserve and protect the Chamoral language by encouraging. What better way than to encourage our own young children to use the Chamoral language in our, in their daily lives? Language immersion methodologies have been proven to be successful for language restoration in a number of communities around the world. And one specific model of that, and I'm sure that President Amory Arceo will speak about it, is the A' Puna Na Leo Preschool in Hawaii, which surrounds preschool-aged children in an environment conducive to learning their native language. And the legislature also finds, ladies and gentlemen, and to the listening audience, that there was in-depth research and collaboration with the experts from the mainland and from the island of Hawaii, the state of Hawaii, in literally true preservation collaboration for our native languages and our identity. And because of that, this committee felt that with the team of experts out there who have the passion and the heart for advocating that preservation, this bill was born. And at this time, I do know that there is a panel here, and if I can ask Mr. Sepeda, please to just share with me the listing. Here to speak, we do have Saina, Mr. Bill Polino. We have Ms. Amory Arceo, Mr. Roland Kirigwa, Ms. Evelyn Tapashnia. As a parent, Jimmy Teria, as a parent, I know he's with the Department of Education Chamoral Program, but he is coming here today as a parent. We have also from the Chamoral Studies with the Department of Education is Mrs. Rafina Minjola, who's coming here for support. Angela, is that Cruz? Angelina? Cruz. And then, as a parent, is support and Terrence Diego. If there are any other members in the audience who would like to sign up, please don't hesitate to do so. I have Alan Sepeda here from our committee, to my right, a staff committee member, please sign in. Okay? Um, you know what, Saina Polino, por favor. I will yield to the table. I do know that we have been collaborating, so I'll leave it to you, Saina Amory Arceo, and then for the full presentation. Okay? Conseguir, por favor.
You know, I see Amory, Blas Arceo. Esta kana 30 años diu totogui esti pene sihini i kultura teni lenguahe. Kululonya i lenguahe na banda. Benatumo hamzuna manhami matotu. No megai ma dibidi gi tautauta, megai años. Lo pagu na ora, dao wehu sangen na manhami matotu zen i instituim Chamoru gi diwi. Gov moni zen zen bonitu, nasenantiesti i dinanyi. Gof money dan bonitu na senantia esti i dinanya mommy para ben hanau on. Za samri unli gi tinistiku na hungan maga hit pa ben danya pare tongkulu na li choatu. Za amana atu da. The Chief Hora Academy has been in existence for over 10 years. Thirteen years now, founded in 2005. The school with the intent to model Aha Pananaleo, a prominent accredited Indigenous language preschool immersion program in Hawaii. However, with the lack of resources at the time, a more feasible and economical structure of an immersion summer camp program was established. With an enrollment of almost 200 students for the first summer, our request by popular demand pushed the implementation of an after-school program which followed that same year. Since then, the programs have been sustainable and productive. Below are some of the successes of Chief Hora Academy through the years. So we had, we've had our Tempun Somnak program, 13 rounds of that. Graduating almost 3,000 immersed students starting since 2005. We've implemented an after-school program, our Tempun Minaguf, for 13 years now with 500 immersed students, approximately 500 immersed students. And in 2008, we started our Manteni Familia classes, which included the families learning and our, in our family immersion program with 300 immersed families. Since 2010, in our Solweha classes, in our adult community classes and our corporate classes, we've had over 200 immersed students. Another one of our accomplishments is that we garnered $900,000 grant from A&amp;E to create that which Mr. Bill Polino directed under the Esther Martinez Initiative with 10 training manuals and an immersion curriculum module we produced to train 15 immersion educators. And I just brought it, just so you see that we have our, we have our stuff together. We're just waiting to implement it, you know, aside from our after-school program and our summer program. So I guess this is it, if given the opportunity. However, with, in all the programs, we believe that our family immersion program is the most successful in producing fluent speakers. And it is through this and, and secondly, our Solweha classes that we are able to prove that immersion works. We'll show that in a testimony, in a video, in a little bit. We need a high level of parent support in order to sustain the school. It's crucial for the immersion program to thrive. Therefore, because it allows opportunity for parents and family members to practice using the language in everyday communication within a home, parents and family members, it creates opportunities for them to provide input with their children and to practice with them every day in a common indigenous setting that drives self-identity. Successful language revitalization, and I'd like to say this is a point because we've been doing this for 13 years, so if anybody is wondering, this is taken from the Aha Pananaleo website, 2016, under DOE. And I quote, "Successful language revitalization involves a long, multi-stage and multi-pronged process addressing not only problematic curricular and pedagogical issues, but also policy and infrastructure development. The Hawaiian language revitalization movement and specific efforts within the Hawaii Department of Education is a good example to follow, for us to follow." And so they've been added since 2003. And since 2003, they are now, the Pananaleo has 13 schools, 13 preschools all throughout Hawaii. Most linguists and educators would agree that total immersion programs are the best option for revitalizing a language. They're built on a common sense premise that the way to learn a language is to create an environment in which the language and only that language is constantly used. And so with that, Senator, Senadora, I'd like to say that, just to give you an idea of the appropriations and how we're going to use it in this, in this manner now that we've, you know, been, it's no longer going to be a pilot because we've proven it already. So the immersion programs within Hora is not a pilot anymore, it's proven. We've produced successful families, and you'll hear in the testimonies today some of this evidence. But here's what we plan to do for the first year of it with these monies. And 150K is, I know it's big and we appreciate it, but it's seed money to get us started. We need more to keep us going, to sustain us. So in year one, our focus is going to be on curriculum refining and development for the two to four-year-olds in the preschool because right now, this is based for general language immersion educators to train. There are 10 training modules. It's ready to go to train immersion educators. And then we have three sets of lesson plans, all in three different areas in the school, at home, and in the community. And so here's our plan. Phase one, which would be month one to three, should we get the funding immediately. From January to March, we plan to recruit experienced and trained immersion educators to refine current curriculum and assessments to fit preschool standards. So we need to, you know, move into refining that. So that's, we think we can do it in three months. Phase two, during months two and three overlapping February and March, to recruit faculty and staff on implementation of immersion curriculum and assessment. Phase three, months four to nine, which is April to September, train faculty and staff on implementation and practicum of immersion curriculum and assessments. And phase four, months 10 to 12, which is October to December, the faculty will develop preschool visuals and learning aids that coincide with immersion curriculum and assessments. So to coincide with the quote that I said earlier, that successful language revitalization involves long, multi-stage and multi-pronged process, this is what I meant by taking our time to make sure we develop it right so that in the future, we look forward to developing more base sites in small communities instead of taking many, many students. And then finally, phase five, month 12, to print all visual and learning aids. And between months one to 12, this whole year, we will be finding the most suitable facility for our preschool. And we have many options on our list right now. St. Francis offered a classroom. Out of St. Francis, we've done it before. We've held a pilot, that was a pilot preschool program that was 100% successful as far as fluency. However, the grant ran out, we did that under the A&amp;E grant. We have a realtor also looking around here in Anavatia for a place right now. He's been looking for the last couple of months to see, you know, what we can find. So through this year, we will use this funding to refine and develop and really get downpack our curriculum and training of immersion educators and the staff so that we ensure success. And then we go into year two. Now this funding will be used off for year one and then year two. Hopefully, by then, our board, we have a very aggressive, an aggressive board right now. I have all the confidence in them that we will find a way to continue to fund for sustainability our year two activities. And that's where we'll purchase all the equipment, and that's going to happen in year two. And then start to implement the daycare recruit and start. So although originally I thought that we, in my excitement and my passion, I wanted it started in August of 2017, I have a business person on my board that just, you know, put me in my place and said, "Wait a minute, we got to do this right, we got to take our time and do it right." And I have all the faith in him and his success and his businesses. And so therefore, this is what I propose we will do with 150K, is to solidify our curriculum, train the immersion educators, to ensure that we have proficient immersion educators. And so lastly, we pray, and God willing, we open the preschool in June of 2018, after all the planning and implementation and training, June 2018. As my final testimony in, for this bill, I'd like to present the evidence that, and allow this video that I want to show to speak for itself of our, all our work, all our hard work for the past 13 years of immersion, this immersion education.
As they're setting that up, Ms. Arceo, we can have a copy of the testimony that you have so we can make copies and append it to the journal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Esta si duu smasi. And so Senator, I leave you and our people with that as just small evidence of some of the work that that would be the best way to prove, aside from the pictures and the people you see here today, the parents, to prove our work for the last 13 years. Si duu smasi ni todoa zidumo za ni senapatamohein guazia ha.
Tongkulu na si duu smasi para hamzui toduz guni. Guahu, semurzu gi kurosonmu za ni zoku aga lo mas aplingi zoku komentusun, comprende? Lo aplinglo peitagia kadadia peitagua, peitagui po quintes ki finut semur. So dispensal, that I speak in English. So that as oversight chair of tourism, when I have to share with the listening audience, when I was asked about this program and how we can move to implement it forward, I had to share how embarrassed I was when I was at that meeting because we had families like, I want to say, the Bora, Picas, parents, and their attempt to learn the language with their children. And I was sitting in the audience of the meeting at the Ladio Freedom Hall, and I couldn't speak when I saw this video. And in the audience was also my brother. And though we both understand the language, because my grandmother spoke a little English or broken English, that's why I would say that we at least got the understanding of how to at least understand what she wanted and what she wanted us to do. But when I saw the Farren family there committing and working, I said to myself, it is, I'm embarrassed that I didn't take the initiative for myself to teach my children. And my husband, who's also a native of Guam, his father's American Indian, his mother's Chamor, the mother spoke the language to her personally every day. He would speak the language to my mother, my father, my uncles, my aunties. But when he looked at me, he spoke in English. And when I asked him, "Why is it that every time, even to my youngest son Jathan, that when you see him, you speak Chamor? But when you look at me, you speak English?" And he said, "Ay dea sagual." "It's because you cannot answer me back in Chamor." And when I was sitting there at that meeting, at that conference, listening to why it was important to get resources from the tourist attraction fund because it was a part of Guam's enabling legislation to support Chamor activities, to preserve and to advocate and to perpetuate the Chamor language and the Chamor identity, I said, "What better way than to start with myself?" Because though it was a different mindset back in the 60s and 70s that in order for us to have a better education, we didn't have to speak our language, we had to speak English because we would have better job opportunities because we could speak the English language better. That was the mindset. Had I, had I known what I know today based on preserving our language, I would have said, "It is not fair that we learn somebody else's language without having to learn our own." And ladies and gentlemen, this is my commitment back to the people to say, "I'm here to start." And I had to, I felt compelled to say that now. I do know that others of you wanted to, want to present testimony, but I had to share with you, Senora Amory, that it was important that I take the time to say thank you to all the hard work, to the parents that are here, to the members that are here, to the volunteers that are here. The two bills this morning is because the commitment from this legislature is to make sure that we don't lose that language. And if there is a programs out there that we can help to, and step up to the plate, then we have to at least give the little resources that we have. We at least need to share that. And that's why these bills are created today. So thank you very much for that. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the Johnny Sablon music. It truly brings back a lot of memories. But to Qua and to all the other children that are there, thank you for never quitting on teaching the language because, because I wish I can do, I wish I can speak it as fluently as that young, beautiful, seven-years-old Ms. Kirigwa. To the parents, thank you. So, Mr. Polino, I will go ahead and yield the floor to you.
Senator Taitina Munya Barnes, that was a very moving testimonial that you have done. For the record, guahu si duu Polino toto inalahanzu za dispensazu sa ane aogangu si Amory kulamu malangu magat gini ki halatsa. Za no ta'ja timpoku ni parabaitugia dipotsi hafa malago parabaitugia guini na testimonium. Lo magmato gi egan guenogi uranglas dos gi satangma kase enona ora fanmaketop. I mean, nama kumaulu kadadiya. West, magatna huasujis ti hafa dipotsi parabaisangan. Za hungan ki anu kurasonmu matuo fineni na parabaisportisina bio. Za uhungi na genen ikurasonmu loke na humuchung esti sa zangintaigui ikurasonmu ti opusilistina na bio ni parahuuchung zo gogagau na todu du loke itauto il lehaslatura isinidora isinidorasia uma supportisina bio. I, if neni na dipotsi parabaisangan, zanginta atan i ane ma implementasti ane monodzi ni grant no manoi iuro academias onius ni dipotsi sinagran kua hasalapi kua fundonyani para onen afatsotsosina programa. West, magatna hungan basia Guam no majima fana no master teacher guina tiempo. Za Guam gumia dipotsi para manmatugia todu du stis ya ileplu. To du du i dipotsi afemanu para mafanaguanya hafa nama nera. Napa mafuni para mafanaguanya ilinguai, idos pedagogical practices and strategies. Hungan insili za inimplementasti gi eskuilan San Francisco ki za zonya. Za matu chinya magat aziches, iches onius, i pocho onius ki fineni na ane paguin implementasti. Za untuwa fa i dipotsi itilinguaya humuchung lo adus ya nakasin hinengi ni huli prefecto kene kene ni famagun. If neni na ni paynoyo ni dipotsi humuchung kene ni famagun. Inadanya esti nakasin programa zan i osa untuwa na eskuilan Rilihon esti. West, demadanya eno, west, inadanya zan ya jima fana nan corpor works of mercy. Guan na famagun manmatugis kuila za magogo ti olatan spam. Omagun esti za liña, mister bo kausinya unnoi kamalinkaridat ne esti olatan spam. Akana poru, anyo huak esti nakasin quintus kene ipagun ki finut samoro. Za eni gi dipotsi atzanginta plotehisti nakasin hinengi esti na ilinguai ya noi situus. Za hazi popritehisti, paynoyo unestoria. Gi timpo itzapanius, you know, when the island was actually occupied. And one of the places in Iran, in Iran, which was used actually as a concentration camp, which is called Pajestis. And I know not too many people knew about this story. But my family, whom I come from 19 altogether, and 15 other families with probably not less than 10 children of each of those family members. One evening, late evening, they were all awakened. Somehow, when they were, you know, when they all woke up in the middle of the night, they were made to line up in Pajestis. This was just out of that cave where the only shelter that they had was that big cave in Pajestis. They were all made to line up. And they were told not to say anything. They were given instruction not to talk to each other. However, my mother could not even keep that silence. She had to stand up. And what did she use? She used a language that came from her heart, that came as a mother tongue. A tongue other than, I mean, no other language did she use, but something that came from the heart. And she took out the rosary and started saying the rosary in Chamor. One of the soldiers, there were about five of them with guns. And one of them stood up and he said, "You are not going to say anything." My mother turned around and looked at them and she continued to say the rosary in Chamor. And before everybody knew what was going on, everybody was responding in that language. Right after the rosary, the abena nantuus was sung also in Chamor. One of the things I think that my parents noticed and the others noticed, there were five of them with guns, only one left behind, all four left. And so the rosary and the singing was done in Chamor. Then this soldier gave them, you know, an instruction that they need to start running. But somehow, people were afraid to run at that time, you know, during that instruction. They, the second time, the soldier was very angry and he said, "You'd better start going, to save your life, you'd better start going, start moving." So everybody started running. And within a few minutes, guess what? My oldest brother had to turn around because everybody heard a gunshot. This Japanese guy committed suicide. He killed himself. And what is it that we learned from something like this? Something that was coming from the heart. And the value also that came from this, that my parents had to explain to us, and I maintain by the way, a diary, you know, since I was a little boy, I started writing. And I started writing in Chamor as well as in English. And so I wrote these things. And one of the things that my parents emphasized is the love for your fellow human being. Guaja itiguamukilis jonu. That one in itself I will never forget. And the depth of it, I can never, never understate that. That even till now, my relationship with people can never, you know, go below that. I need to look, one of the things that was emphasized in guaja itiguamukilis jonu was to look at the highest goodness of a person. And that was, that's a relationship that I can still, I still carry throughout my life. And it's something that I incognito also with my children. One thing also that at St. Francis School, as we, you know, the parents started asking that we implement this also the second year of implementation at St. Francis School, is to implement the program with the higher elementary, which is from fifth grade all the way down to pre-K. There was this troubled child who had to go every Wednesday to a department of, I mean, you know, a department of, not corrections, but the, you know, the youth, yes. And so he walked, I was in the student store and I was standing there and he took out, I mean, $2. He went over to the refrigerator and he took out a drink. And he walked out, I mean, started walking to the door and then suddenly he made a stop. He turned around and returned the drink and he said to me, "Senor Bill, tuli ene tuspesis jonai kamalinkaridat saguatauto mas nomesisita." And you see, again, because of those values that were taught, because if it's just the language that is to be taught, those values and beliefs must go together. That is the reason why language and culture cannot be separated. It cannot divorce, you know, divorce each other. Because once you start doing that, then language is going to be superficial type of learning. Therefore, that culture has to be emphasized in whatever teaching aspect that it's done. And it, you know, in the things that we have written in this, in these documents, the lesson planning as well as in the pedagogical practices and those examples that we have given, those beliefs and values are so much embedded in these, the writings that we put together. By the way, it was edited by the late Bennet Tuka, God bless her soul. But I'll tell you, it was something that she worked even when she was in, in the Philippines. Because I met her there, I was there, I had suffered a heart attack and so I met her there. And she took these books and started editing them. And one of the things that Bennet said was, you know, "I don't think I have much, you know, life to live, you know, here on earth. But all of you, you need to make sure and push the legislative body to make sure that things are done to, not only to preserve, but to ensure the continuity of, you know, the language and the culture of the Chamor people." And so, you know, I left the school quite a bit in a hurry this morning. I wasn't at work yesterday. But here is the nubinanyinu. And guess what? The entire school got together this morning to pray the nubinanyinu in Chamor. And you know what? We're going to be having a culminating activity where what is it that we do? After something like this in our culture is to come and share that fellowship. You know, this type of practice that we have done over the years with St. Francis School, we also notice in the implementation of this program that bullying is so minimal. That we hardly talk about bullying because of the belief of inagwaja, inagofli, that, you know, we are God's creatures. And therefore, whatever it is that is incognito in this culture, it's gotta be perpetuated. And so there's hardly, you know, a time where we have to talk about rules and regulations in terms of bullying. It's very minimal, maybe two or three, you know, during the year and that's it. And I testify this because I know this as a school principal for St. Francis School. One particular person in our school who never spoke a bit of Chamor, guess what? He is quite fluent. And one of the things that he testified, you know, in front of the student assembly. And he said, "Something is gotta be done with this program. We need funding to ensure that, you know, this is constantly perpetuated." So I realize that there's $150,000 that probably may go through and appropriate it. But I also venture to say and recommend with your committee, push for another $150,000. You know, I came up here because I couldn't help but talk, I mean, testify for this, the Mr. Mariaga, right? Marinaga.
Marinaga.
Yeah. And you know what? That really caught my attention. Because you, you know, you look at the island of Guam. And what is it that we can give this tourists? You know, the families that we have made friends from Japan and from Korea. One of the things that they have talked about is the culture, the language that they hear. They want to see more of these and more activities as they come out to this island. And so I know I've put together, you know, and it can be read, but these are my testimonials and thank you for allowing us, allowing me to be here today. Donkulu na siti smasi, sisi smasi binendise.
Buen provecho, Mr. Paulino. Thank you for that wonderful testimony and that sharing of your family's story. I think it's really, really important that that get out. And testimonies like that remind us of what we need to do as the people coming together to protect what was God given to us. So thank you, sisi smasi. Ladies and gentlemen, I know this is out of the ordinary, but I've been up here and if I can just take a nature break, I'll be right back, just 30 seconds.